I'm going to call this committee of the whole meeting to order here at six Council Chambers. Do we have any remote electronics attendance requests? Nope. All right. Any questions on board appointments? And we'll move to our first presentation of the Neighborhood Partnership Committee's Neighborhood of the Month Award.
And you have those. Okay, I'll go ahead and announce. Thank you. So Mayor Riya Padi will be presenting first the Neighborhood Partnership Committee Commercial Neighborhood of the Month Award to Wright Cycles LLC. And they are located at 2018 16th Street. And our Neighborhood Partnership Committee's Residential Neighborhood of the Month Award is presented to Alberto Garcia of 112 16th Avenue.
Just a word before we get started on the rest of the agenda, the air conditioning in here is out. That is why it's so warm. So we apologize. And we hope the fans can keep up. So next up on presentation is Public Art and Place Making Plan, Policy and NEA R-Town Grant. Oh, sorry. Let's, can Mr. Moyer, would you mind helping move that center? Thank you so much. Alexandra Elias Renew Moline.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. We are very pleased and excited to be able to present to you two years of work on the Public Art and Place Making Plan. With us today in Columbus, Ohio is Josh Lapp from Designing Local. He is our consultant for this effort. And Josh, if you want to go ahead and share your screen, I think you have the first part of the presentation. So we're doing this, Josh is doing.
Yeah.
And.
Absolutely.
I will follow up with a more detailed presentation on some of the policies.
Can you just move the mic so that it consistently picks you up?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
That's great. Hi, everyone. I'm happy to be here via video, especially since your AC is out. And it's probably hot there, too, like it is here in Ohio. I'm going to move pretty quickly through our part of the presentation, and then I'm going to flip it over to Alex. But it's been a really, you know, great effort, and we really powered through this planning effort through COVID. And really, we're flexible and got a lot done. And I think ultimately, our efforts were not hampered at all by the pandemic in terms of reaching out to folks and having really good conversations. So let me go through a little bit of the results of the plan.
So.
As you probably. Go ahead, Alex.
I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted to cover these first two slides because some of them are.
Oh, yeah.
Through with us today. We began our process in September of 2018, when we were fortunate to be awarded a grant from the Moline Foundation. Paul Plagenz is here with us today. And we're grateful for the partnership that really has brought this plan to you. And you can go to the next slide, please, Josh.
Thank you.
We also worked with a public art steering committee that was not named by the city council, but we brought the list of folks that agreed to participate in this at the beginning of our process. And they helped with everything from helping us select Designing Local as consultant, all the way through to providing comments on the draft plan. So we were very pleased that folks like this could join us for providing input on the public art plan. So.
So we did a lot of, we did a lot of outreach, again, despite COVID. So I know Amanda was able to make, my business partner Amanda was able to make a visit to Moline before the pandemic, which was great to have that on the ground knowledge. But we did conduct a number of stakeholder interviews, number of presentations. And this is kind of where we got into the middle of the pandemic. And we shifted gears and did actually, on the quote unquote, "on the ground" meetings using Google Maps. But we actually were able to have live polling and had folks really walk around the community with us and look at different places where we would like to place public art or we thought that might be good opportunities for public art, and got their real time feedback. And that really helped us develop some of the concepts you'll see in addition to the large scale survey we had out at that time. So ultimately, we engaged with about 200 participants who gave us really good feedback as part of this. We focused very much on two neighborhoods. You know, both the downtown area and the Florissanti neighborhood as well. That's what we're going to be talking about today. And we had come up with some conceptual projects which are really meant to inspire and help folks imagine what could be when it comes to public art. You know, public art is always in the eye of the beholder. And really, we heard, you know, lots of ideas and thoughts from folks as we were doing all that public engagement. And we kind of, you know, so what you're going to be looking at is, is not necessarily a, something that we're proposing that actually be physically built, but rather it's meant to, you know, locate a site and come up with some concepts of what could be there. But ultimately, we'll have, you know, we would hire an artist and the artist would execute that project. So I wanted to preface, you know, these conceptual projects on that. The first one we called Leading Light. And that's at the Q Parkway. You know, the new rail station is a big deal in my mind. I heard about it before we ever worked on this project because I'm a transit aficionado. And so that connection is really going to be the entry point for folks coming from the rest of Illinois to Moline. And so this is really something that we wanted to kind of help lead folks out of that site around the downtown area. So you can see the image here is what we showed in our Walk About Talk About. And we heard some subject matter and themes that kind of rose to the top. Folks wanted to hear poetry, welcome messages, things that were uplifting and really kind of making folks feel good as they enter the community. They also really wanted to talk about nature. So we heard that in a lot of things. Folks really liked nature. And then they liked the idea of abstract, bright colors, lines, shapes. And they felt that the scale was really important. And connectivity to the river and lighting was also important, since this was a gateway. So this is, these are some of the things that we looked at as potential inspiration pieces for, for this location. Top one is in Juno, Alaska. It's where cruise ships dock. You see some of the other ones are in New York, here on the left. And so this is really what we looked at for inspiration. And here is a pretty simple rendering. Well, I should say it's not very simple to do, but ultimately, just gives you an idea of what this kind of icon or welcoming piece could be at this specific location. Another one that we looked at is at 19th Street, beginning at 7th Avenue. So we call this one Shapes and Colors. You know, there's the new off ramp for the new bridge. This is a really heavily trafficked corridor. So pedestrian and bike safety is really important here. And so we were, you know, again, hearing from the community to see what their themes and ideas were. Again, the words, poetry, welcome messages, because again, this is a place where we're going to be welcoming people into the community. Also, the idea of the abstract lines and colors. But again, pedestrian safety, creative crosswalks, if that's something that we could ultimately have approved. And lighting, really creating something that's an entry point. So we looked at some, again, some other places around the country that have done very cool conceptual projects. And ultimately, we came up with a concept of, you know, having this welcoming entry point that is all about shapes and lighting and having, you know, if possible, doing creative crosswalks and safety improvements. And we have a night image as well. And by the way, of course, all of these are in the final plan. So the vision for public art that we really developed is that public art adds the dynamic or creative ecosystem of the city and delivers high impacts, public spaces that elevate Moline regionally and the Quad Cities nationwide. So this is both about elevating Moline within, you know, your group of communities, but also elevating the entire region to different places around the country. And we feel like public art can really be that, especially since Moline is the place that welcomes folks in. And then we also created a criteria for evaluation of public art projects. So when the public art is, we're doing actually like a call for artists. These are the kind of things that we're going to be looking for. So bold and iconic, synonymous with the brand of Moline and the Quad Cities, connecting folks to one another, bringing visitors into the community, but also captivating locals. So those like two different components there. Being a uniquely Quad Cities experience, bringing in diversity and celebrating the seasons, which is always something important. And then we also planned for some cultural corridors. So River Drive, 12th Street, 6th Avenue and 19th Street being really places that we could have as full fledged cultural corridors and having a number of projects in those areas. And so we also have a series of strategies to achieve that vision. And I'm just going to go through this really quickly because Alex is going to touch on it. But establishing the Moline Public Art Program, being an ordinance, is really key here. And this policy just operationalizes, really creates and operationalizes, public art program. And the funding mechanism to fund the public art program. Because of course, that is always something when we're dealing with projects. And we have funding models that Alex is also going to go over. But that's something that we looked at from the very beginning is not just how can we have this pretty plan, but how can we actually bring it to fruition? And with that, I am going to stop sharing my screen. Hopefully. And kick it back over to Alex, but I will be here to answer any questions.
Do a deeper dive into some of the policy issues. We're hoping to get some guidance on. I'll just mention that, you know, we really tried to do this plan consistent with some of our regional partners' goals. So Q 2030 is part of our plan. Visit Quad Cities Tourism Master Plan. Of course, Dave Harrell, who sat on our steering committee, is here as well this evening. So we've intentionally gone into some of the functional components of the plan, both to highlight them for you. So as you're interested in those particular topics, you can look further into that matter. And then also just to make clear sort of some of the direction we're looking for where legal counsel starts to draft the ordinances. So I will get through this as quickly as possible. You know, our philosophy when we started, as Josh mentioned, is that we wanted to start small, be successful in a smaller area, and then potentially expand this to the rest of downtown. And, you know, beyond that, if the council chose to do that. And then the two neighborhoods we were recommending working in is these two for starters. David went over, or excuse me, Josh went over a little bit, our recommended cultural corridors. Those will become more important when I talk about some of the funding implementation measures. But we wanted you to see where those are. And really, as a result of the plan, your experience in those areas should be different. It should look different. It should look more beautiful. And it should have a component that you can recognize as public art. So David went through these. These are the criteria by which the Public Art Commission would make recommendations to you, the city council, on specific projects. So we've tried to create a series of guidelines. But in any case, all of these projects would fall under the banner of Artist for Everyone, regardless of age, income, physical ability. So that's really intended to be our guiding principle going on in the plan. So as you approach funding, and of course, the nuts and bolts of any implementation for plans is how you're going to fund it. So we have developed a recommended multi-pronged strategy for your consideration. And as you're reviewing some of these, we wanted to sort of just highlight some of the things that you might consider as you're looking at some of these funding options. You know, how adoption of these affects other, you know, expenditures that you have, how these are perceived by the private development community, and then how much each funding mechanism will create over time. So in order to just explore that visually with you, we created this series of assumptions, and they're not set in stone, and they're just a series of assumptions. If you wanted to look at this, what we assume is actually. So as you can see, there is a budget allocation, grant funding, a private development component, and CIP. So I'll go through those individually. When we met, when we had the first draft of the plan, we met with the Public Art Steering Committee to review that. We had been talking about allocating a specific dollar amount or recommending that the council adopt. I think in light of just different competing priorities and the fact that we're. Budget allocation. I'm saying as I can get. We just recommend that you have a budget allocation in the plan for public art. And you will both receive sources from different sources there. And then you can also allocate annually as part of your regular budgeting process. And we are recommending that you include that. We are also recommending that for certain public improvement projects, only in these areas, that there is a 2% CIP component. So for regular street repaving, regular maintenance, smaller projects would not be 2%. But larger projects, curb gutter sidewalk, kind of future streetscape would be included in this 2%. But again, it's only in the downtown area, and then the funds would be intended to be spent in that area. One of the main reasons why we chose this CIP component is that we think that with the I-74 redevelopment area, there will be curb gutter sidewalk projects. Since 19th Street is proposed as a cultural corridor, we think it makes sense to tie those two things together. So your CIP projects with your future redevelopment areas. And then similarly, we really thought a lot. Many cities have a component of private development contribution for public art. I think how you do that and how you craft that is, one, a sensitive topic because there is a perception from the private development community that that's, you know, an added requirement. But at the same time, the feedback that we got from the private development community as we went through our process was that, one, many entities, many developers are doing this anyway. And then, two, the benefit that you get from really creating an environment that is attractive and welcoming is something that is a benefit. So the way we have structured this is that the 1% private development portion of the plan would only be on those corridors. So we chose those corridors because those are sites that are likely, they're likely to be a half a block or larger development. They probably will need a development agreement and/or a TIF reimbursement. So you're already in a situation where you're negotiating with a developer. We also, so for smaller projects, 10 units under would not be a requirement. So for example, you recently saw the Sorbeck Lofts. That would not be a project that would be included for two reasons. One, it was on 5th Avenue, and two, it was a very small project. Also, we would not require, we would, we are not recommending that you have a requirement for historic tax credit projects like the Axis Hotel because they already have a lot of requirements in the first place. And then the restoration of that pursuant to the tax, the tax credit guidelines is already sort of aesthetic beautification in itself. So we're not recommending that. And then we have also, something that's typically done in a situation where there's a 1% requirement is that there's an in-lufy offered. So if the developer does not want to include public art in his or her project, they can pay an in-lufy instead, and that would be at 80% of the 1%. Those are the types of funds that could be added to your annual budget for public art that you could choose to spend on specific projects in the downtown and other areas. And then no matter what the cost of the project is for this 1%, it would be capped at $100,000. So that is all detailed.
Would that cap apply then? So if they chose to pay, would it be less than that? Like, it would be the $80,000 or would it be $100,000 paid?
That's probably a policy decision for the council. We didn't get that specific, but I think that's a good question. And then we are recommending that you establish a public art commission. This commission would, we're recommending that it be seven members, that those folks are interested in public art generally and other considerations deemed necessary by the mayor. We also, after talking with the Historic Preservation Commission folks, we think it's probably important to include a member of the Historic Preservation Interest Group, generally, in the Public Art Commission. I think they offer a valuable perspective and is something the council may want to consider. So when you read the plan, you won't read that specifically, but we are recommending it. And then we have a series of staggered terms, just in terms of how you set up your commission and then establish it as a commission that would have a staff liaison as well. We did look at other possibilities that are, we are not proposing to include in the ordinances right now. So these are listed in the plan as things that you could do. We have not, of course, you know, we're here for policy guidance, so we could certainly change this. But right now, we have not included anything other than the fact that, you know, TIF funding could be used for public art. It doesn't say it shall. But if you were doing a TIF project and you wanted to use a portion of your TIF funding, your legal counsel would certainly advise you on this, but it's allowable. And then the facade improvement program. In earlier iterations, we had talked about expanding the facade improvement program to allow for more funding if they did a public art project. We are not requiring, or we are not recommending that at this time. That was because of feedback that we got in doing one particular project downtown and then also in talking with the Historic Preservation folks and the facade improvement folks. So those are just, you'll see them mentioned in the plan, but they are not part of the ordinances, depending on the guidance that we get from you today. And then the administrative oversight of a public art plan includes what you, how you maintain your collection, how you dispose of the collection after it's no longer useful or parts of it are no longer useful. So you really are getting a comprehensive ordinance. And of course, David Silverman is here from Ansel Blank and can answer any legal questions you have. But we've really tried to set this up in such a way that, one, your policy decisions, you know, that we've highlighted what we feel are really the, the kind of nuts and bolts of the plan that would be helpful to have you weigh in on, of course, in determining what type of program you would like to have. I would also, I guess, invite comments from David or just simply close, Mayor. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. We've certainly appreciated the partnership.
Thank you so much. Are there questions for our presenters? Comments from the council? Mr. O'Brien.
I know that public art is an intangible thing that it brings to your community. It brings a sense of place. Do we have any data that shows it improves foot traffic, that type of thing? Was that, I didn't see that in there. Was that in there? Do we have anything like hard data?
I don't.
We don't, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we don't have that. I can certainly look into it and see. I don't know, Josh.
Yeah, it's a good question. And that's something that we've proposed for a lot of communities that is something that could be evaluated. There are certainly some national studies, and Chicago is sort of like the key community that has some cost benefit analysis out of their public art investments, particularly at Millennium Park. But that is not something that there has been a lot of research on. Although I think, you know, anecdotally, that's something that we tend to, you know, know that it does do that pretty well. But it's certainly something that we think should, there should be more research into and that could be a component of your evaluation of the investment once it is going to be made.
I think our friends at Visit Quad Cities would probably have some data for you. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to contribute to that question, that'd be great.
Mayor, good evening, members of council. I'm Dave Harrell, President and CEO of Visit Quad Cities. I think it's a great question. I think first and foremost, I just want to applaud the council for having this conversation. I think that the city of Moline is kind of stepping out there, having this discussion, but also is potentially in a position to lead on this opportunity for their region, I think is unique. From a Visit Quad Cities perspective, as the official destination marketing organization for the community, is part of our Quad Cities Destination Vision Strategic Plan, ultimately our Tourism Master Plan. And Alex, you know, referenced, public art shows its face several times within that comprehensive plan in four functional areas. And, and what we know through the destinations that are our colleagues around the United States, if you look at the space of economic development, quality of place, quality of life, communities that are more successful within economic development spaces are ones that have very robust public art initiatives, plans, and policies. So we know that through the colleagues that we deal with. And I think it's a great question on the data. And there is data available to that. When we talk about public art in our realm in Illinois and Iowa, you look at a variety of communities that are doing it really well. Rockford, Illinois, it kind of jumps out to us, you know, Iowa City, Champaign. There's communities that are doing really well. And certainly, there's national benchmarks. To Knoxville, Tennessee, literally reimagined their downtown footprint. And there's a lot of commonalities to Knoxville and Moline. And their public art program is extremely, you know, robust. When we think about public art and we think about it from a tourism perspective and a vibrancy perspective, we believe that communities are consumable brands. And that's something that really, we feel is the most important, you know, element of this. It's not only just an opportunity to engage Quad citizens and citizens of Moline with public art, but also visitors. And on average, there's about 3,200 people here in the community that are consuming the Quad Cities on a regular basis. So if we look vibrant, if we showcase the community in a diverse, you know, way, typically, that's going to lead to broader economic development conversations. What's unique about, I think, public art in this vein, in the Quad Cities, if you think about the infrastructure that we have, if you think about our riverfront, if you think about the great stories that we can share, public art can help us accomplish those objectives. I think it really fits well within that plan. But we have data and information that we're more than happy to share with this body. I think it's been a robust conversation. I do want to recognize Mario Moline and Alex's leadership for kind of bringing this to bear. And I do think from a destination marketing and management perspective, the more that we can be connected to it within the visitor economy space and how we can help the city of Moline do that, we stand ready. But we think it's a wonderful plan. We feel like it's got legs. We absolutely know it's going to add value to Moline in a lot of fronts. And quite frankly, it's going to add a significant amount of value to Quad Cities region. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that might have.
So thank you very much, Mr. Harrell. I think, Alex, you were specifically saying you need direction on this policy, correct? From the council, or you want feedback on what you've presented as the considerations?
Yes, Mayor.
Anyone want to go first? Mr. Schmidt.
What is the value of that 80%? I forgot the word you used for it.
The in-lufy?
In-lufy.
Yes. The in-lufy as opposed to 100%.
I'm not sure.
Why would they choose one over the other?
No, why would we allow them to pay less to, we're letting them pay less to give us cash, right? What's the, what's the purpose of that? What are we trying to do? Are we trying to encourage people to give us their money instead of doing their own art projects? art projects?
Josh, you can go ahead.
Yeah, the simple answer to that is yes. We are trying to encourage folks to give us their money, so that way we can direct the investments to public spaces and to some of the projects that we've kind of identified in those locations, rather than on private property.
Okay.
But we're happy if they do their own projects, too.
Mr. Timian.
Kind of a two-part question. I'm thinking of funding mechanisms. The, the application fee or any of these things involving TIFs, I'm concerned, obviously, when the TIFs expire, TIF 1 specifically, which is coming up. So I'm kind of curious how, what we would do at that point. And second, with the, the suggestion for using the money from the facade improvement program, I know that was just a suggestion for kind of dipping into funds there, but wasn't, and I could just be misremembering, isn't the facade improvement for non-TIF areas of the city?
So you're illuminating one of the reasons that we are not recommending right now that the facade improvement program be used for public art.
But with the, tying it to the TIF, I'm afraid that when the TIFs expire, then we're going to be coming back and figuring out a new way to fund it.
So similarly, we're not proposing that you use TIF funds directly, although I understand from the legal counsel that it's an allowable cost, but there's no direct tie really, except on those corridors that you will have, that you're likely to be negotiating with the developer anyway, in a TIF rebate situation. So the 1% would just be one of the other items in the pro forma. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes, and, and we would still be working with people on those corridors after the TIF expires anyway, in theory, hopefully. So I, I understand that. Thank you.
Yes.
I, I'd like to compliment you on the makeup of the committee. I think it's good to include representation, the way you've described it. So that's some feedback for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Seeing as I will have to staff that commission. Thank you.
I have a question on the timeline. We had, you know, you had the, all the different places that this art would be, being placed at. Does that happen like every year or every two years that you, I mean, is this kind of ballpark? I mean, is it gonna, like, we'll get something on Sylvan Island, and then another year or so, we'll get something on 19th?
Yeah, so I think that's a very good question, and part of the reason for the multi-pronged approach is to try to generate funding consistently over time. And so you could select one of those projects. So as an example, the item that you have after this is to consider an NEA grant that you would be an applicant for. It's up to $150,000. So for example, we're considering that maybe Sylvan Island is an appro, you know, one of those concepts that was proposed in the public art plan. So you would kind of be working through the public art commission on what you want to do accomplish the next year. The public art commission would do a report every year. You know, it would depend on the budget allocation, how much money is available, and then they would just decide. We did assign general project costs to those concepts that are in the plan, so that's only to give an order of magnitude, to give you a sense of if you were to pursue a project with these features, like a large mural, a large lit mural, generally how much that would cost. So we've tried to provide enough information in the plan that you can have a lot of flexibility in what you pursue and when, and that you have multiple funding sources. Is that helpful?
Yes. So it's kind of, as it edges out, we'll see more of how it.
Yes, I think if you wanted to put $5 million of your budget into a public art program every year, you could do a lot quickly.
You could be Art City USA.
Art City, yeah. We could.
Mr. Waldron.
I, I just want to congratulate you guys on what you presented, and I fully embrace what you presented, and would like to see an ordinance come forward, basically with what you presented. That said, I do have a little bit of concern about the 2% on the CIP. As you know, I'm a CIP person, and I hate to see anything siphoned off that could go to our streets and infrastructure. But other than that, I would certainly like to see an ordinance move forward.
Mr. Timian.
One last, thank you, Your Honor. And this is more of a question about what other communities have done. In terms of maintenance, I'm specifically thinking of the crosswalks, where the paint does fade. Does this fall on public works then, in their budget to maintain, or is this part of the, the art budget to replenish those? And this could be true for any of the art pieces, I guess.
So I, Josh, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, yeah, on that, on the crosswalk piece in particular, I mean, number one, if there's an engineer in the room tonight, they might be like cursing my name because the crosswalks are something that is, some places do it, some places don't, but it's something that we think is, is feasible. That's also something that some public works departments have taken up on their own, as something they just want to do throughout the city to increase safety. If that was the case, that would likely be, you know, coming from their own budget or coming as part of that CIP budget. But for the most part, the, the public art program would, would be responsible for maintenance of its own pieces, coming from its own budget, if that makes sense. And, you know, anytime we're doing pieces, we are thinking about that ahead of time. So we try to understand the maintenance needs right off the bat. While we say permanent, that doesn't necessarily, permanent doesn't mean forever. Permanent means, you know, 30 years, and then we know that we're going to need to do maintenance or to de-accesion the piece. But that is built into the program, and it's possible it could come from any of the funding sources in terms of the on-street stuff, because that is more ephemeral and, you know, may last a couple of years, but it's not going to last beyond that.
Thank you.
And could, could I also then say that the commission could also use maintenance costs as a way to grade the projects on their viability?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Seuss.
I, one thing I did hear before, and this was from a former mayor of a larger city, was that downtown should have something interesting to look at every 10 feet as you're walking by. So I don't know, I know it's not a stat, but whether it's, you know, it's flowers or art, I can see where art can complement that. And if you can keep people in downtown, the more likelihood that they're going to be spending money and, and just keep coming back, taking pictures, putting them on Instagram, and helping us promote our community. So, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I did want to share that. I don't know how accurate that is.
I heard the same thing.
Mr. O'Brien.
I'd just like to echo what the mayor said about including Historic Preservation, because what, a lot of what you see downtown, the restoration of these old buildings, the bark involved for this, would not be that way with not preservation being involved. And it wasn't something that happened easy. I was, I remember that. It was, and, and you know, you've got a lot of well-restored buildings in downtown Moline that, again, make, make it a place where people want to go, so.
Mr. Schmidt.
I think I failed to mention earlier, too, that I very much like what we're seeing, love to see this moving forward. I had one, it's kind of a nitty-gritty question, but since we're at the ordinance guidance, I think that's, now's the time. It says staggering terms with initially five three-year terms and two two-year terms, which would make us a five and two rotation long-term. Why that instead of a four and three?
Alderman, I think it can be whatever you want it to be.
I guess I would like to see a four and three, so that it's more balanced in its turnover.
I can understand that. I tend to, based on the interviews I've had with people interested in serving on committees, sometimes the shorter timeline makes it more possible for them because they have something else in their life they want to get to after they do that work, or they, they just have a lot going on for a certain period of time. And I think three and under really help us get to people who are really committed for the full amount of time, instead of trickling off in a four-year or late or longer.
I was speaking about the number of three-year terms versus the number of two-year terms.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
I, I would like to see it at four and three, whichever way it goes, just because then every two years, you have five out of seven going off at a time, I think it's more upsetting than four out of seven.
Okay. We will look at that.
That's a good, yes, thank you. Do you have all the feedback you need to put this into a final form?
Yeah, we, I mean. Hi. Pleasure to meet all of you. I'm David Silverman. I've been doing a lot of work for the city. It's very nice to meet you this evening. Yeah, I think we have. We will put together, I think our plan is to, the first meeting in August, do a first reading on it, and then hopefully the second meeting to get the vote on it. If we do have any additional questions as we're moving forward, we will direct them to Bob, and we'll get this wrapped up.
So just to be clear, we actually would have to put it on the cow and then do a first reading and then a second reading. So i- if we could give some guidance, if the council wants to see this move ahead faster, then we need to tell them it's okay to ask for consideration at the first reading if you'd like to move it that quickly. Because you, what you just quoted was a two-week timeframe, and what we traditionally need is a three-week timeframe.
Got it.
So I, I'll leave that to you to guide them. Yes, Mr. Waldron.
I, I would like the three-week to allow public input, especially since we're talking about a financial commitment out of our operating budget of whatever the amount turns out to be. So I, I would like to see the traditional three.
Okay, so just for clarification there.
Maybe, maybe nobody shows up as usual, but they're given the opportunity.
Got it. Thank you. So on to the NEA Our Town Grant, please.
Yes, and I just have one slide on this. Thank you, Josh. We recently found out about an NEA grant called the Our Town Grant. We are, we had a meeting with the Moline CDC, Moline Center, and Quad City Arts to determine whether this was an appropriate application for the partners to pursue. And the requirements of the grant are, you know, basically what it, what it allows and requires are kind of listed on the left there. It does require a municipal partner. There's a 50/50 match. You can get up to $150,000. And we're recommending, at this point at least, going forward and making an application for the full amount. Our, there's a two-phase application. Under this scenario, Quad City Arts would be the lead. They've been successful at getting other NEA grants. It requires the municipal participation, so those would be sort of the co-applicants. Renew Moline can do the grant writing work, sort of the heavy lifting. And we're still working on evaluating with the Moline CDC and Moline Center whether we have the right types of projects that could potentially be funded on, on this. So this is sort of your introduction to the concept. I think it's a nice follow-on to illustrate to you how we would start to pursue implementation of the plan. And so we would bring this back to you. But the potential public art projects are kind of listed on the right, and when we come back to you for a resolution and a letter of support for the grant application, we would have a more refined project description for you, so.
Any questions on that item?
This needs a motion?
Um, yes, if you'd like to give direction to move ahead.
I would like to go ahead, motion.
Second.
It's been a motion by Alderman Meyer, seconded by Alderman Timian. All in favor, oh, discussion. Mr. Walden.
Where are we coming up with our portion of the match?
Yeah. Good question.
So part of what we will do when we present to you the, the projects is present to you a potential funding strategy. So I don't think that $150,000 would be the match. As an example, Paul Plagen's is here. They have a public art endowment that could potentially be used as a match. So we will have sort of a general layout for you of the projects and what we anticipate the match to be. We also talked about potentially including the Floris Sante sign, which is currently funded through CDBG, but if we could get a 50% match for you on that, that might, you know, be something you want to pursue. So we can have a better sense of the anticipated cost of the project and, and what that would look like for you.
So our motion is only to give her the go-ahead to keep exploring, rather than saying, yes, it's all good to go.
And I would like to see when you finally figure out where the amount is and what it is, that you're work with staff. If it's going to be some sort of contribution from the city, whatever it would be, that we know where it's coming from and what that account is, so to speak.
Thank you, Alderman.
Okay, so it's been, we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Mayor, may I, just one more thing, which is not on your agenda, but I had a surprise visit today from Brandon Neese, who is the artist that did the mural on the Beagle Building in October of 2019. And Brandon responded to an RFP. We got, I don't know, 20, 15 or 20 proposals from around the region and across the country. And Brandon is a local artist who was selected for that, and he was just fantastic to work with, top-notch professional, and I just wanted you to at least be able to say hello to him, because he came for the public art plan.
Hello, and thank you.
Please stand. Yes.
I didn't expect you to really come here and talk, but, um, one thing I can say is working with Alex and the Visit Quad Cities, Dave and the whole Renew project, the Quad City Arts project, the whole thing has been an incredible experience. The feedback that we, that I've gotten personally since the mural we put downtown Moline has been crazy. People in Bettendorf, East Moline, Rock Island, just, it's, it's been nice. I think it's a huge benefit to our city. Me and my fiance, whenever we go to a new city or state, wherever, we, first thing we kind of look for is things to do that are free. We love stuff like public art, going to Millennium Park, stuff we don't have to pay for, stuff that makes us feel like that city is fresh, they're progressive, they are moving forward, not just trying to preserve a historic. It makes, it makes us want to move there. So I've had conversations with Alex about it, Kevin Maynard over at the Quad City Arts, and I think there's a lot of possibility, a lot of buildings, a lot of space that we have that could be used for public art, and I hope everything goes well. Some of the stuff, I'm kind of, it's like a whole other language to me, but, but it's nice to hear everybody conversate and everybody be excited on, on the same page, so. Thank you, guys. We think.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, do we have any questions on the agenda? I thought that was a hand raising. All right, we'll move to item number one, amending Illinois Delmas LLC Development Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. This is a special ordinance that authorized the mayor and clerk to execute the second amendment to the agreement between the development agreement and economic incentive agreement between the city of Moline and Delmas LLC, which, as you know, is the project on Sixth Avenue. During the course of development of the property, the developer ran into unknown and unforeseen site conditions, and the subsurface soil conditions, which required additional investment on their part, and based on that, they've applied for a rebate, a reimbursement in the amount of $109,174. It was considered by the DVMT and the PMT, and it was recommended for approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Did you catch those, Alderman? Mr. Waldron and Mr. Schmidt? Thank you. Any discussion?
So what?
Mr. O'Brien.
So what was the, the problem, I guess?
Well, what apparently was.
Subsoil.
Subsurface soils, materials, poor, poor soil materials, sewer locations, relocates, and other streetscape improvements that were required to be done.
Okay.
So modifications after the fact, and then subsurface exploration didn't reveal the things they were looking for.
I did that quite well. I'm Jim Thompson. I'm the developer. So that's, that's precisely what we came up with. Part of, part of the TIF was to do the streetscape. The city gave us the estimate on what they thought that was going to cost, and it was considerably short of, of the amount that we actually spent. There's no profit in that for us, and I assure the council, this isn't anything about poor market conditions due to the pandemic, et cetera. I'm a developer, and that risk falls with me. So this is just money that I had to spend that was required to get an occupancy permit, so I've asked to have that amended.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Can I report that we're doing well, too? Last week, we rented, we only have six of them left. You know, we did, we did slow down the construction considerably when, when we got hit by the pandemic, but we've survived it, and they're becoming quite popular. So I'll be talking to you about the 1,200 blocks soon.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to that meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next up is Quad City Chamber Community Navigator's Grant.
Sure. What we're looking for this evening is a resolution declaring the city of Moline support for an endorsement of the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce effort to secure a new grant through the U.S. Small Business Administration for the Community Navigator Pilot Program. The program is very The program is very specifically designed to reach out to small businesses that were basically underserved businesses, and by partnering with organizations with deep roots in the communities to make that happen. In order for this grant to go forward, we're on a time clock, actually. We just got this, I think it was last week, Friday. But the applications are due July 23rd, 2021. And the chamber is looking to submit a $2.5 million grant application. This grant requires that there be a central organization that serves as a hub, and that there are organizations and municipalities like the City of Moline that serve as spokes to bring it together. And so you're partnering, they're basically asking for local governments, other agencies to partner together with, in this case, it would be the chamber, to procure this grant so they could benefit small businesses, usually minority-owned businesses, and those that are underrepresented or underserved, because they did not receive funding like other businesses did when the original programs happened during the outset of the pandemic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Moir. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
I have to recuse myself. I'm a board member of the Quad Cities Chamber.
Thank you so much, Mr. Macias. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. West Gateway Conveyance.
West Gateway. As you know, we had worked with the West Gateway Partners for the development Mercato on Fifth, I guess Fifth Avenue, is that it? Fifth Avenue? Sometime ago. And during the course of, during the course of that project and through the agreements, a certain step was missed. And the state pointed out to them that in order for them to procure grants from the state, that they were not the owners of all the property. Unfortunately, some were in the process. The alleyway in particular, the parcels that comprise it, needed to be deeded over, so we'd be looking to quitclaim deed those properties to West Gateway so they'd be eligible to obtain the grants going forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Williams. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Moir.
I'm just curious, so when we deed this over to the West Gateway Partners, then they'll own it, and then they're supposed to, when the project is finished, they're supposed to then donate it to the Mercato?
That's my understanding.
Are they guaranteed, is there like guaranteed that they're actually going to...
I think Marty might be able to answer that.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Okay. I just want to know if that's somewhere written down, you know, in an agreement that they are going to donate it?
What happened is, in the original development agreement between West Gateway and the City of Moline, we did pass an ordinance to vacate, but we never deeded the property. And so it's in the agreement for us to do that, we just never did.
So West Gateway's not going to change their mind and...
No, they need this.
I mean, they need to donate, they're going to be donating it to the Mercato.
Yes, Mercato needs it so they can get their grant.
Just want to make sure that we got that, you know, tightened up, so, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number four, amending Chapter Four, Alcoholic Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances.
So here we are again.
It's the second bite, right?
Yes, the second, I believe, three bites. So this week we are working at amendments to the cocktails-to-go as well as to the Sunday sale hours. With cocktails-to-go, we are recommending that you follow to stay long, amending your ordinance to, I believe, stop summoning hotels to go at 10:00. And then on Sunday hours, we are recommending that you follow some of your communities surrounding with 6:00 AM sale times, which is the same as some of your communities around you and your other sale hours. Go Mina has that same sale time, and again, it is the same as your other days of the week. So we believe that it will be easy to administer. You'll have your maybe jump start on Sunday sales as opposed to a island or Davenport, annual address and issue for some of your best. So that is a recommendation on the cocktails-to-go. Again, it is only available for licensed photos of on and off premises licenses. So, and it is different than single-serve from the automatic, in that single-serve is alcohol or liquor in its original package under the 20 ounces. Yeah, 20 ounces or 24-ounce packages. Now, cocktails-to-go are mixed drinks or a single-serve of wine that is repackaged, so there is no conflict there. So as a second round of amendments to Chapter Four, we are recommending those two.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Moir. Discussion, Mr. Moir.
Thank you. So we're also going to waive the $400 fee in this particular city. Is that because, is that because they've already paid a fee for a liquor license and this was just an additional one?
Yes, and an option, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I thank you for this.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. I did get one call from constituent that expressed a couple just questions, making sure we're getting all of our details in order. One of them, Margaret already addressed with how this impacts or interacts with our minimums. Are there any additional concerns for business serving cocktails-to-go in the way of liability? Or are they protected, just like if they're at a liquor store and they sold it to the person, as long as that person is of estate, they could receive it at that time? Is it that same sort of protection, or I guess, is there a greater liability for the business?
So are you talking about like german shop liability or...
Yes, and in general, I guess.
So... That's a very complicated question. The overall liability for sale to somebody who is underage or, you know, already under the influence is the same. So you have to, like cocktails-to-go, you can take them up in the establishment or have them delivered to your home. We talked about that last week. We're unsure how. Well, we're not really sure. Well, we'll put that aside for now. And the requirements are very similar, so you have to be over 20 months. You cannot have it in the passenger part of your car. Obviously, other restrictions on selling alcohol apply. And then, of course, it's up to insurers to cover that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number five, Human Rights Commission Reactivation.
Yes, I love this project.
She says non-facetiously.
Right, I'm not being facetious. I think, now, given what the cities and the councils, one of your missions is to be a welcoming, inclusive community. And you want to be in that mission. And I think that this can be a very valuable resource to achieve that goal. As background, and we really looked at this, as background, we have a human rights commission or... and for years, we had a working commission. What they did, and I am not being derogatory and all about their PS work, what they did was they served the community by taking residents or workers or, I guess, visitors' complaints about civil rights violations. And they would refer those individuals to the Department of Human Rights or the EWS, and that was their work. And they had about five complaints a year. The commission's total budget was $200,000. And so obviously, they couldn't do a whole lot. They, and so they did that. HR was their staff liaison, and that, I think, on an ad hoc basis. And slowly, as terms ended, they just diminished and fell off. And it became inactive. So one of Mayor Mike Patti's first assignments to me was figure out how we bring this back and give us ideas and make this work. And so what we did was we did a review of all sorts of human rights commissions around the state in Iowa. And what we found was three basic formats. One was to simply educate residents in the community about rights, about individual rights. Another way that some operate is just how yours did. We see complaints, reform them up. And a third, such as Davenport and Chupacan, or being, actually, give human rights ordinances, not commission ordinances, but human rights ordinances, much like the Human Rights Act in the state or the or title set under federal law, but maybe more expansive. So in addition to prohibiting actions based on age or gender or gender identity or disability or religion, they have added other protections, such as credit history, familial status, parental, well, probably listen, is familiar, but those types of protections. And then they adjudicate complaints so that residents or individuals who have had those rights violated within those communities can actually file a complaint. And then there is a hearing and a bond. So there are communities here in the state, in Iowa, who do that. Many for their son housing, fear housing violations because it's fair comment and, you know, a right that many people find violated. The, and it's an admirable goal to provide that. The issue there, though, is resources. So that means that you have to have staff committed to that process. We have to train commissioners and staff, and you have to dedicate funds to carry that out. So I'm not saying don't do that or don't think about it. I'm saying think about it real good. And if you want that, well, we'll do that at our second or third phase of this. But take, take this reactivation steps. We advise that you start by reactivating the commission. We, our amendments include fixing the number of commissioners. The court ordinance provides that it will be five to seven commissioners. I'm not really sure why, is that variable amount? But we have suggested fixing it at seven. And currently, commissioners hold four-year terms. As the mayor mentioned earlier in the public art presentation, that can be a pretty huge initiative for people, especially given your initiatives here. So we advise reducing that term to two years. Since we have no actual commissioners right now, we advise that the original terms are staggered, either one year or two years, and that, you know, then they will be a staggered term. This will also allow more people to participate and bring more voices to this project. So we, as I said, advise several step processes. First of all, you need a commission. You need appointments, and you need to give them an initial focus. We believe, given that you probably have no budget, that you begin by focusing on education, partnering with other support programs, partnering with private programs, and with the goal to educate and inform, and maybe narrow that to a few issues, maybe fair housing. I know that AJ mentioned earlier today to me, and she was a very valuable asset and rookie in analyzing this, was chief call. in analyzing this, this was Chief Ball. The eviction moratorium is there. There'd be a lot of men who are too vicious. Maybe Chief Ball, I'm not really sure. Your staff is very attuned and focused on this. But, you know, that could be a very good place to start because we know that we will have an influx of housing issues by virtue of these temporary moratoriums lifting. So, there could be a focus. But once you get your commission in place, we'll also bring other views and voices to this discussion. You can work with them to create specific initiatives, get them working on that, get them partnering with other programs, either within or outside of city government. And then focusing on step two, which would be, how do we expand this, or do we expand it? And we can work to provide more guidance and resources to that analysis. But surely, this is a pretty big undertaking. And you don't want to take on too much at one time. So, we do advise this kind of multi-step part. And we will, you know, in conjunction with your residents and visitors and workers in Moline, develop a program and initiatives that really will serve them and serve them beyond the prior commission, which did a great job. But maybe we have an opportunity to improve that now. So, we see this as the start, not the end, of this process.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gustavus. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Are there any discussion? Mr. O'Brien.
So, you recommend we start out on like a tiered system. Maybe the first year or so, we do what? When all these evictions start happening and people start coming, knocking on our doors, saying, help us, what teeth are we going to have? What power are we going to have to help?
Right, so our power is really in information, initiative. So, we need to be a first step, get a commission if we focus in that regard on housing. You know, education can be a powerful tool. And knowing and partnering with other organizations, like, or even your own K CUP program, can provide people who find themselves with these challenges, information about what their rights are, where they can go for help, that kind of thing, can be a very powerful beginning, not an ending, but a beginning. And that is our suggestion for the remainder of this year as you also work to identify other goals and bring in other ideas from, you know, other variety of people in your community who may have a better idea of needs and how to address those. I'm not an expert, I think that nobody here is. But together, as we reach out to the community, we can be experts when we need other input.
I was thinking, Mr. O'Brien, that the way you're describing it is the teeth come by being a little more proactive than only reactive in terms of referral. And that's kind of what you're saying, right? Is that the people who would be on this commission would be engaged in conversation ahead of the issues happening and coming to them, not conversation, but whatever kind of programs they need to reach out to the community? If that makes sense. Mr. Timian.
With the phase approach, which I think makes sense because otherwise we'll just topple. And I'm interested in knowing, in our partnering communities specifically, I think Rock Island has one with more teeth. You mentioned Davenport as well, with the actual hearings. What is their budget? Do we know that, just for a point of comparison?
Yeah, Davenport has a budget of two, almost two hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, that's quite a bit more than two.
And do they have subpoena power or any kind of enforcement mechanism?
Yeah, they have. But I understand that theirs is not the model. I know Rock Island is working on a better program. But we have other examples around the state.
I like for the, a city our size, that what you're proposing makes sense to me. Something that needs that big of a budget, I think is too unwieldy and unnecessary for a city our size. Other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six, 2021 JAG grant.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the city has a long history of receiving JAG grants, over ten years now. It is done in concert with the memorandum of understanding, which we are looking for a resolution to approve that M O U between the city of Moline and the county of Rock Island so that we can pursue this grant. The amount is $17,856 for fiscal '21. And it is distributed, as is indicated in the council action report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number seven, C M T solids equipment design. Mr. Vitas.
We are looking for a resolution that would authorize the mayor clerk to execute a professional service agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, Inc. for design services at the North Slope wastewater treatment plant with a bio-solids de-watering equipment installation in the amount of $155,000.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. O'Brien.
Second.
Second about Mr. Moyer. Any discussion? Mr. Waldron.
Tony, the, you talk about in the, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly talks a little bit about the return on investment. What is the actual year's estimate for the R O A if we went to these new types of screw de-watering?
Return on investment is a tough question to answer. The, when considering the screw press versus the existing technology, the existing technology is at the end of its useful life. And so, the screw presses allow us to operate without much human intervention. We press the button and it comes on. And so, without knowing exactly how we're going to redelicate the staff that are currently babysitting the existing equipment and the existing conveyors, you know, I won't be able to answer that question without knowing where the staff that are being displaced will go. Does that answer your question?
This technology is considerably more expensive than the existing belt press infrastructure, correct?
No, not necessarily.
About the same price?
Belt filter presses are about the same price, maybe a little more pricey, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number eight, 2021 patching program change order number one.
Yes, we are looking for change order number with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities, Inc. for the patching program for the current fiscal year in the amount of $451,853.41. This was for additional work in Moline and with the Iowa Interstate Railroad to complete 34th Street railroad pavement. This is the additional work that was done and is within the budget.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Mr. Moyer.
I just want to say thanks to the Public Works Department because this is a wonderful project. It's really, it's just fixed a ton of problems I had in Ward five. So, I'm really excited about it and I'm going to vote yes for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number nine, Sweet Arnie's Liquor City Consents.
Sure, this is a resolution that would give the mayor and clerk authorization to execute a liquor license, class A restaurant liquor license at 2900 River Drive, Suite A in Moline to Sweet Arnie's Barbecue Restaurant, which is currently located in the city of East Moline and would be locating at this location at 2900 River Drive. I can't speak to the quality of the food. Haven't been there yet, but I have tried most restaurants in town already, at least down by the river, I'm getting there.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Timian? Seconded by Alderman Moyer? Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Typically, Bob, we try not to poach with our neighbors. I know it happens. A good example is the Godfathers in East Moline just relocated over to Silvis. Did we have any discussion with East Moline about this relocation?
No, I think we did not poach them in terms of going out.
They just listened and they, this is, yeah, they came to us their own decision.
But I did ask that same question at staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer.
I don't like poaching staff either, but I think we've got issues there as well.
Thank you. They're not, so, is it Uncle Julio's that's there? They're all still staying put. They're going to fill the.
This is farther to the east.
To the east, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a big building.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none, more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Do we have another? I do not believe we do. We will move on to informationals. Carol Barnes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hopefully, you all received an email from me last night. And I would like to say that I am very pleased to report to council that due to favorable interest rates and upcoming call dates of November 1st, that we have an opportunity to refinance two of our T I F bonds for a savings of $375,000. And those two T I F bonds are T I F number two, and the savings would be about $259,000. And in T I F number six, about $116,000. I'd also like to just point out that Stevens Park lies within both of those T I Fs. The final term, both of the refundings will remain the same at November 1, 2031. And due to the smaller size and shorter terms of the issues, a private placement with local banking institutions is recommended. And of the two issues, it's about 1.9 million for T I F number two and 945,000 for T I F number three. And it's just perfect for banks. They're very interested in bidding for that. If the council decides to move forward on the refundings, we will prepare a preliminary term sheet. And the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2021 A and 2021 B, will be at our July 27th meeting. In addition to the private placement, I did want to mention that if we do a private placement, we can save on issuance costs as well, including the official statement that will not be needed. A credit review rating from our Moody's investment will not be needed, nor will underwriting. And the projected savings from the private placement will be about $40,000. And that's included in the savings that we've already talked about. The bid opening on the bonds will be scheduled for the morning of August 10th with council's approval of the second reading of the ordinance that night. And that night, we will have a complete set of the final numbers as well as the winner, winning bid for council's consideration. And then lastly, the delivery and closing date will be targeted for September 2nd. And the projected savings assumes a true interest cost of approximately 1.89% for both issues. And the total projected savings of the $375,000 is net all of our issuance costs. So, real pleased to announce that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Make a motion to move forward with the borrowing finance.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Williams. Any discussion? I'll say thank you. Thank you for this wonderful work.
We're really, we're very excited. So, we're going to move quickly then and come back to you next week.
So, yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, it's my first bond. So, as we look at the projected savings, are there any risks to factors that would make that not come to fruition? Are there any additional risks we take on? Or is this a fairly sure, safe bet?
I mean, it's pretty sure. When we actually go out for bids, if it ends up and the council is not satisfied with the bids that we have received, we can always reject those and go to a public sale. But there would be a lot more costs involved and the rates would not be as good.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to hear it from you. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Williams.
Carol, you're awesome.
Great job.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right.
We didn't steal her from Beddorff.
All right. I'm going to call this question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right. None, all in, please stretch a moment while we move to my presentation.
Do that?
I'm going to ask this one. No help?
You do what you're told. Sweating.
Scratching exercises. Ooh, sure.
Me one shot?
No, I think we're good. I think we're spot on.
We're covered.
Exactly.
Right. Well, good evening, gentlemen. This may be unconventional, but I thought the best way to share some work I've been doing with colleagues. And as we get closer to valuable conversation about how we will spend our American Rescue Plan dollars, I want to present you with some situational awareness and a potential solution. I recognize that you will be the final arbiters of all expenditures. So, it is in my role as a conduit for connecting situations with solutions that I bring this information to you today. Little story, 17 years ago, my husband and I desperately looked for childcare for our first child so we could do our jobs. Family was half a country away and multiple states away and simply not an option. We went to a center first, but sought an alternative in in-home family care by the time she was six months old. We cobbled together part-time care with my husband's part-time work at the time. And we consider ourselves lucky to have found something we could work with. The situation today for many working parents is not so seamless. Imagine what our nurses, firefighters, and police have encountered when seeking childcare around their shift work, let alone during this pandemic. Our hospitality workers also have a difficult time finding care for the flexible hours they need in their profession. In addition to these workers, our families of color have experienced childcare displacement. As we know, death and illness due to COVID-19 affected them at higher rates. And many families who depended on their grandparents, uncles, aunts, and neighbors for childcare could no longer access them. Center for American Progress predicted in 2020 that Black and Hispanic families would be hit the hardest due to family inability to pay and that centers in low-income neighborhoods would go unstaffed. And we have seen this bear out in our own community. The Asperanza Center Childcare permanently closed because of the pandemic. We have clear examples of how this pandemic has impacted our workforce in crucial ways exacerbating any pre-existing childcare crisis and shuttering childcare centers and forcing families to make difficult decisions about staying in the workforce or being home to take care of children. So, with these workforce issues in mind, I need to share with you that in the last 13 months, we've seen. months, we've seen a drop of 6,261 people in our labor force. We also know the difficulty businesses are having filling their open job postings, and all this is to say that we need our labor force to grow and our Moline parents need childcare options in order to get back to work. This reality is reiterated by business organizations that note that the future of work includes consideration for workforce infrastructure components such as high-quality options for and unimpeded access to childcare and early childhood education. So workforce infrastructure such as this makes it possible for our citizens to find work, maintain work, or improve the work they are doing, and without such infrastructure, we remain vulnerable to decreased revenues. Nationally, $64.5 billion per year has been lost in wages and economic activity, and research has shown that much of this loss has been because mothers left the workforce in droves, and when just 1% of moms leave the workforce, $8.7 billion are lost in wages. According to Ready Nation, a national bipartisan nonprofit along with the Center for American Progress and 0-3 Illinois, has seen a loss of $2.4 billion associated with their childcare crisis. So it's easy to see then that childcare is a public good and essential to sustaining our economic recovery. Beyond economic losses, though, we also have a vacancy situation around town that is strained. Right now, we have zero care providers for infants in licensed centers in Moline and only 13 vacancies for infants in family care centers, otherwise known as in-home childcare. We also have zero care providers for children with disabilities or special needs aged 12 to 8, and while that is a more difficult challenge to meet but represents a need nonetheless. We also have one center in all of Moline that offers second and third shift and weekend hours and some family care centers that do the same but not enough. So I've included a chart for your perusal. In addition to that current data on available slots, in 2018, Skip Along Family and Community Services, in partnership with United Way, conducted a study on quality childcare needs in the Quad Cities. Based on predictions by the Center for American Progress as well as research done in similar diverse communities, the problem has only grown since that time. For example, in 2018, Rock Island County was short approximately 7,000 licensed childcare slots for children aged 0 to 5. While some children have family-based childcare slots, that's not a guarantee, and coronavirus, as I mentioned, has disrupted that option for families. Of children accounted for in that age group, 0 to 5 in Rock Island County, approximately 51% of them were living in poverty, which means we don't only need more childcare slots, but we need them to be financially and geographically accessible. So it's also helpful to look at geographic information about where we have what's known as childcare deserts right now in Moline. A simple definition for childcare deserts from Center for American Progress is an any area with an insufficient supply of licensed childcare. It's clear from the picture I included here that the scariest supply of childcare, those darkest orange circles, lies between Avenue of the Cities and Route 92, between 41st Street and 53rd Streets, as well as part of the, I believe it's the Second Ward and the area behind Walmart by the Rock River. Additionally, a snapshot of requested referrals in Rock Island County by age group is included here from the last six and a half months that reveals requests for 1-4-year-old care is outpacing the availability of that care, if you compare it with my previous highlighted chart. Families, I am told, are requesting family care centers and licensed care centers care in approximately equal numbers with a mix of first and second shift requests and some second to third shift requests. So I ask you to imagine if we could offer more second and third and weekend shift or variable hour childcare so that essential workers, many of whom are shift workers, could get back to work confidently. Finally, I think consideration should be given to the fact that one-third, about approximately 28.2% of our population aged 25 and older has a bachelor's degree or higher, and certainly there are good-paying jobs available without a bachelor's degree, but this fact means that there is potential for childcare costs to outpace income, which aligns with research on women in particular that shows that childcare costs of greater than $500 a month means a woman is 10% less likely to still be employed. So this affordability factor is not one that we can ignore, but I choose to leave those solutions up to state and federal programs or to any future discussions we might have. So regardless of affordability, we must have enough space in our childcare centers or family care centers and enough second, third, or weekend shift options or not adequately, in my view, addressing this problem. But I do offer a solution, and I propose that the city of Moline develop a loan or grant program to distribute at minimum a total of $200,000 of American Rescue Plan dollars to do two things. One, encourage new childcare and early education center development as well as early education workforce development to increase available vacancies. And number two, enhance existing centers and family care centers so they can provide more childcare vacancies or change their hours to increase our options for second shift, third shift, and weekend coverage. The $200,000 or more could be allocated in varying amounts to those who apply to a program constructed in the same manner as our micro-business loan program with extra points for providing second shift, third shift, and/or weekend hours, and additionally, potentially extra points for starting a care center. And you'll note in the chart below a way that I've devised to divvy up that larger dollar amount. So, should the council include the creation of such a program in its ARPA dispersment priorities? I know that staff does have the capacity to guide the application process, to distribute the dollars to worthy applicants, and track expenditures per ARPA guidelines. These expenditures are permissible uses under the ARPA guidelines relating to addressing negative impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector, and under assistance to qualified census tracts, of which Moline has one. Tract 217.00 includes small portions of the second and fourth ward and a larger portion of the third ward, and tract 245.00 included in the diagrams here show portions of the Rock Island arsenal which are served by Moline Cove Valley Schools and also happen to correspond to childcare desert data on that previous chart. So when it comes to judging the merits of such a program against our strategic plan, albeit not finalized yet, this program relates heavily to pillar number three, the economy, as well as pillar number five, infrastructure, and in some ways, it also references pillar four, quality of place, because I believe any community that can offer high-quality benefits to their residents that meet essential needs is a quality community where working families want to live. In taking steps toward improving workforce infrastructure, we are also living out our core values of collaboration and resiliency. So in closing, I want to make it clear that I'm not requesting action on this idea tonight. I request that you simply place this information alongside the requests we've already received, and when our opportunities for decision-making on ARPA dollars arise, you consider this a worthy expenditure. And I will entertain any further questions or in a meeting or an email exchange, and I also have friends in the industry, Marcie Menzenhall and Lindsay Meeker, who are experts in their own right. I'll let you say your titles. So there you have it. Workforce infrastructure. Questions? Yes, Mr. Waldron?
Is this just going to be a Moline initiative, or are we going to look at East Moline, Rock Island County, and Rock Island?
I believe it's most effective if we focus on just Moline because if we're using ARPA dollars, they have to be used in Moline.
But I mean, is it a regional approach more than just a Moline approach?
Well, there are organizations that want to see more childcare availability. Q2030, I believe, has this as a pillar, United Way.
Well, my point is, if it's good for Moline, isn't it good for Rock Island, Rock Island County, East Moline? I mean, if it's going to be a priority, shouldn't it be a county-wide priority, not just a Moline one?
Possibly, but as you know, I had a regional meeting with regional people in the Big Seven, and they already had their own plans. And so, you know, my focus is on what Moline needs, and it happens that we can extrapolate some of this data down to Moline. With their help, I was able to do some of that.
In that regional meeting, did they have plans to enter or at least consider this for funding in their areas?
I don't believe so.
I don't, yeah, if I can jump in, I don't believe they brought any real specifics up at that meeting, other than a lot of it was focused on CIP, especially in Davenport.
And I...
And the others, like East Moline, they have very little money and...
Right.
Right.
They'll be putting it into their CIP.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Williams.
Madam Mayor, with such a dire need, why would the private sector not rush in and provide this?
Your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. We certainly believe the public-private partnership should be able to happen. What's happening right now is that we really want to encourage small business owners and entrepreneurs in those home programs. Businesses really right now are not investing into the infrastructure of early care and education for multiple reasons. They are looking at, potentially looking at opening up a center on their own site, which doesn't allow them to use their resources appropriately because they don't have the time or talent in early care and education. We have looked from a broad perspective of allowing them to reinvest into early care and education, provide grants, partnerships, and other items. I would say that we have more momentum now during the pre, whatever part we are in the pandemic, because early care and education is certainly brought forward, not only the issues that are causing, it's a two-pronged issue, it is what's happening in our workforce currently with families, as we pointed out, women leaving the workforce, but we're also trying to create the new workforce, because early care and education is essential to create the next workforce, people who are going to be caring for us. We need to make sure those children are well-educated and have high engagement in their communities, but also with problem-solving issues as well.
Can I add to that? I attended a chamber event where the future of work was talked about in depth, and the businesses that I mentioned, there's a Deloitte study, and Deloitte was the expert that talked about the future of work, and 42% of, I believe it was women or workers, can't quite remember, but they, that's almost half of the workers said that a company providing access to quality childcare and early education would make it possible for them to stay more in their profession. So I think what you're noting, though, is the difficulty there is for people who are not professionals in that caregiving or educational area to actually execute a program.
My knee-jerk would be this is not something we would want to be involved in other than, and encourage the private sector or do something to grease the skids to facilitate that. But if the need is so dire and is so important, and we're probably going to have to go it alone, it sounds like the other cities aren't going to come along or the county. If we are going to consider it and we're going to do it, we should really do it because that will attract all the people, I mean, that could be an enhancement through a backdoor that everyone doesn't want to engage, and if we actually blow it up with something huge, it could make all the difference in the world.
That would be, Mr. Williams, that's why I put 2,000 plus, 200,000 plus, right? Because actually, in consulting with staff, right, the upper end of my four to five, you know, entities being created or coming forward to apply is, what was it, 360,000? And actually, I mean, whatever you would want to do, of course, I'm happy to talk about, the sky's the limit in a sense, but I think you're right that the better we do it with good guidance and execution that we know our staff can do because they've done a great job so far, I believe we'll hear more down the road about this micro-business loan program, the more we open up in terms of opportunity for our residents, and beyond this just getting back into work, I mean, we know we need nurses, we know we need police officers, we know we need firefighters, we need all of these people that need shift work, and a lot of people are, that I didn't include in the report, you know, single parents. If their family's gone or not around, how do they find care to do the work that's 12-hour shifts, eight-hour shifts, sometimes four-hour shifts, right? That kind of flexibility is really necessary. So I've generally liked when people are trailblazers, like to be a part of that, and I think Moline could do something great for a small fraction of the ARPA dollars. But again, that will defer to you in future discussions. Mr. Schmidt?
I guess I want to say this is something that I think is very important. This has impacted my family and in several ways, especially in this past year, but even long-term, and has impacted so many friends who've left the workforce, who've had to make those decisions, some of whom are happy about the decisions and some who are not. And I think to more address, more directly address the point in, I think the reason the market doesn't step in is because childcare is expensive. My wife and I both have pretty well-paying jobs, and it is a challenge to make sure you can pay that high fee, especially if you have two kids. And, you know, and it's nothing we can't do, but I just look around and think, how do people with different jobs and with part-time work, how can they make this work? And then I do the math on what a provider earns, and I don't understand how they're making that work. And I think it's a mix of it's such an expense, it feels so expensive even though it's such an underpay, you know, it's not like education where we're pooling all our resources and taking care of it, right? That's, I bet if we priced out school, it's even more expensive. So I think it's just something that can get a little extra help. With the new tax credit being released monthly to parents, that can be huge for kind of greasing on that side, and hopefully a little help on the business side can make things a little better for people here in Moline. That's...
Yes, Mr. Mercedes.
And then there's other stuff that I guess, I remember at one point using the Boys and Girls Club to take care of my kids, and I didn't realize how it was structured until they were there, and I didn't, I was just thinking back at how much of a need there was. We were on a waiting list, and this was years ago, and we were fortunate that we had a 9:00 to 5:00, but there was people that worked second shift that couldn't pick up their kids, they had other people picking. It's a hassle for a lot of people. You're also, you think about the kids, too. If they have these options, they have a little bit more structure, and it does make a difference. So there's a lot of other reasons that you can't quantify that it makes a big difference for families.
I want to mention something Dr. Meeker mentioned to me in conversation, which is that we know we have helpful care from particular community resources, say after-school programs, et cetera, but they have age limits. So actually, our pre-K and some kindergartners cannot be watched by our after-school programs that we have in the district because they're not able to licensure, why is that, believe right?
So...
I'll let you say that correctly.
So we have kind of a, like a niche gap, right, in that we have after-school care for elementary-age students and we have lack of, but some kind of care for, you know, our 0-5, so to speak. But when we see our preschool programs developing in our public school, which is awesome that they're being able to start to serve, you know, three-year-olds and more four-year-olds, but then our community after-school programs actually can't always service all of those age groups, so that age three to six. So infant care is a definite, but when we look at that niche gap of wraparound care for ages three to six, we have a need for that as well.
Okay.
And one thing you all spoke about earlier, and we can demonstrate it through the data, is the return on investment in early care and education. So every dollar that's invested in early education, there is a $7 to $14 return. That means that we have a higher graduation rate, that means we have less people on state entitlement programs, we have less people jailed. These are all the quality of life aspects that we have if they're put into high-quality early care and education. So these, that's the difference. We really want to demystify or unlink, you know, babysitting and daycare, those words no longer really exist in our field. My mom put me in nursery school because she stayed home and I was one of six kids, and I think she was just ready... and I was one of six kids, and I think she was just ready to be rid of one of us. But that's not the reality. We really have both parents working, and we want to have children kindergarten-ready. So, when we talk about return on investment, you heard the data that was pulled from our Child resource referral. We have the data, and we can prove that, not only locally, but nationally. So, it's certainly very helpful.
I want, I want to assure you as well that, you know, we have had presentations from people coming to us for a request for ARPA dollars. I will say, these professionals did not come to me, I want you to know that. I went to them, and that was another function of my connecting the dots between situations and solutions. Their, their names came up in conversations, and I pursued them for some of the data. So, I just think that's a unique distinction you should know. They didn't come to me, I went to them. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I like this from the, the aspect of helping the parents, but I also like what you just said, because the kids are going to be at such a disadvantage if they don't have some kind of framework. I hate to think of a kid starting out like a kindergarten that's never had any kind of group, I guess, training with other kids. That's a nationwide problem. I can tell you, my daughter-in-law just moved to Denver, and you get on a waiting list out there, and they're like, well, whenever you, you know, come and see us. It's definitely a selling-
Yeah.
-point for your community. And education's always been important in this community. You know, you're-
Yeah, I can tell you, there was feedback at a, a community conversation we held in Coal Valley. They were asking at the time, why aren't there more preschool daycare centers in Coal Valley? And of course, the, the district couldn't help with that particular answer, but, you know, if they're asking that there, and we have the data here that says we could use more, then, then it's definitely a transferable question.
Just wanted to add, we're, we're always putting these more, the teachers get a lot of stuff put on. The more, more and more things are put on teachers every day. And this would, I guess, if the kid is more prepared when they get there, then they don't have to deal with the kid that, like, shows up at the classroom, you know, has not had, not had any, what do we call it now, preschool daycare. So, I think it's a definite plus, whatever we can do.
Yes, Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would, just for a point, I've been a single parent for many years, and we luckily had two, I, I had two childcare providers within walking distance. However, the rigid hours forced me to only take certain jobs. I had to pick them up by five, which means I couldn't work a typical nine-to-five. So, that means I had to find a job that was willing to make concessions. As a result, I got paid less, which led to the snowball effect of poverty, and eventually led me to losing my home. That was one contributing factor. I, I just think, what we're talking about is incentivizing daycare providers to locate within Moline. Not, we're not paying their, you know, we're not funding them, we're incentivizing them, or to increase their capacity. I think it's a very worthy thing to do. It makes the city more attractive, not only for businesses, but young families or single people who want to live here, gives them more opportunity for jobs. I wish that that kind of thing existed, and, you know, as you mentioned, too, shift work, they can stay later than five o'clock. So, I, I'm extremely supportive. I would like to throw on that, if we could think of a tiered approach, we look at where a lot of these deserts are. If you move, if you open a center there, maybe you qualify for a little bit more, maybe a bonus, because that is where the higher need is.
Right, so that, I, I did not go all the way with the plan, because, first of all, why do that if the council isn't going to move the idea forward? And again, this can come back later as we discuss, if you'd like. But certainly, that we have professionals we can lean on for some of that. Our, our staff has assured me, like, we can put the program together, they're, they're on board. So, I'll leave it at that for now in the interest of time, but thank you for your comments. One more question, Mr. Waldron.
I'm going to follow up on Alderman Williams' comment, that if we're going to go in, we should go all in. I could agree with that, if this is just Moline-based. This is ARP money for Moline. We're talking about childcare for the entire county. So, the entire county, people that are firefighters and, you know, macing their kids here, we're using our ARP money to augment the entire county, and possibly Illinois. And I do not think that's what that funding is for. Don't have any argument with the basics of what you're presenting. Understand it completely. I just do not feel that this ranks up just for Moline. This should be a county-wide initiative.
Sure. I can continue to talk to partners who might be interested in taking it on, however, we could also devise the plan to make it Moline-centric, if you will.
It's the only way I could support it.
Yeah.
It's Moline's ARP money, not the county's.
What does that mean exactly?
Meaning, we'd have to consider, who, I had this question from, would this be for only residents of Moline, right?
Right, it's a good question.
Right, if you live in Moline and you build a business in Moline, right, that's what we're talking about. I can be on board with that, for sure, you know, because-
For those working-
Say that again?
For those working in Moline.
For those working in Moline. I don't know, Margaret, you'd have to tell us if we're allowed to do that.
So, you know, and funny you mention that. We will have a presentation next week on our, to give you a better overview of what's permissible, how, what you have to do to monitor, et cetera. But yes, it's got to be residents, or employees, or employers, or Moline. And we believe that the government will be very, they will monitor this most.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much for your time. So, public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes. Barbara, please.
Barbara Sandberg, 534 26th Avenue. I'll make it brief, we've had a very interesting meeting. I haven't sat through one of these for a long time. Got more than I need to know, maybe? No. No, I appreciate your efforts. It's exciting to hear a council. I used to sit in the chair, and I, anyway, another story. Pat, thank you for referencing the downtown and the work that we've done down there. I, we started 30 years ago. I sat on the council. That's, well, and it's a long time ago. But we've come a long ways, and the city has invested millions of dollars down there. The property owners have invested millions of dollars down there. We finally can say, I think with pride, pat ourselves, pat ourselves on the back, we've accomplished a great deal. We have come back strong. Unfortunately, this pasture has been horrible for all of us, and the poor people that have their businesses down there have certainly struggled. Do I want to see art down there? Yes, I'm an art person. Do I want it to be nice art, appropriate art, historically significant, if at all possible? We are going to get some, generate some excitement to get people down there. But I do caution you that art is very touchy subject, and we want to be, so that we do not offend anyone in our art down there. We're learning that more and more, I think, as we're looking back at past art pieces. So, I see it positive, I truly do. You all received my email, I think, last night. You, you know where my thoughts are. I really appreciate your consideration and placing a historic preservation commission member, or somebody with historic background, on the Art Commission. I think that would balance it off for you. We know where we've been, we know where we're going. Ask us about buildings that used to be there, that are there, and so forth, in their back history. I think that's important. I think you can add and benefit by that. I do believe that Alex Knight made the statement that she's withdrawing, taking money from the facade. I was behind her, I wasn't quite sure. That, we're a brick-and-mortar group. That's been around for a long, long time. As I mentioned in the email, we started out with just the downtown, we're now working on all the outs areas as well. Yes, maybe sometimes we do have some money left over, but that's not a negative. We always add it, and oftentimes, weather can be an issue. And we do not repay these people until the project is done. We had one winter about three years ago, when we had three major projects going, and the winter came in, like, in October on Halloween night or something like that, and nobody could finish anything until after, in February or March. So, we do need to have that money held over as well. So, even though it looks like we're not spending it all, usually eventually, it does get spent, and well-spent. We are helpful in making sure that they spend their money on quality projects, and so forth, and so on. So, my kudos to the facade committee, and the money that you provide for us to do these projects. It comes from the council. We never know how much from one year to the next we're going to get from you. We just say, thank you, thank you very much, and we do the best we can. So, okay, any questions from me, that, from, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, we will, any further public comment? Yeah, so, sorry, you have a question.
I just, I sat on the Public Arts Commission, or Committee, and we talked about this quite a bit. The facade program was recommended by the consultant who put it together. The committee itself did not want to recommend that, like, it belonged there. So, it was in the report just from the commission. And, and, yeah, so she, she said that we're definitely not recommending it, and for the reasons that she said, so.
Right, Mr. Williams.
And I just want to say, Barb, you're amazing, too.
And no problem.
She lives across the street, I have to say this.
We're good neighbors.
Okay, hearing no other public comment, I will close out the Committee of the Whole and move to the regular council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an invocation?
No, we do not.
All right, roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went? Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of July 13th, 2021, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on July 20th, 2021. Council Bill 1155-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Langman Construction Incorporated for Motor Fuel Techs, section number 21-00000-00-GM, 2021 asphalt program for the amount of $791,870.93.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motioned by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Roll call, please. Alderman, Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1156-2021, a resolution declaring the City of Moline's support for and endorsement of the Quad Cities Chamber application to the U.S. Small Business Administration for the Community Navigator Pilot Program.
Motion to approve Resolution 1156. Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman, Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Abstain.
Six ayes, one abstention, and that motion passes. First reading ordinance is, Council Bill 3016-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter Four, Alcohol and Liquor, the Moline Code of Ordinances, regarding the number of and distance separating Class C, CC, and CCC licenses permitted within the city. Council Bill 3017-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 35, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as Section 35-3103. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Mr. Parr, we move to miscellaneous business. Mr. Williams?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Macias.
Nothing this, tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer?
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to, the library has gotten back to doing some major public programming, and today they had a Wizard of Oz thing, and it was, it was very amazing. They had maybe, I don't know, it seemed like they had a thousand stations, because it was, we were there for a long time, and it was great. Just, so, congratulations to the library for putting on an amazing event.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Just want to say, if they want to put some public art on the east end, the eastern entrance to the city, maybe something to camouflage the car lots, I would accept any public art.
We need another corridor down there.
Maybe a big shamrock. For sure.
It's long overdue.
Yes, that's it.
Mr. Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor, I just want to make sure everybody gets on their calendar. The, tentatively, because weather permitting, they finish up. The Pickleball Grand Opening is scheduled for Wednesday, August 4th, from 5:30 to 9:00. The actual event will actually start at 6:00, but at 5:30, and there is going to be brew available. So, Wednesday, August 4th, Pickleball Grand Opening, it's at the Riverside Pool Parking Lot, from 5:30 to 9:00.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, I've got, I'm sorry, I'm taking your time tonight. I have many things to share with you. Number one, I think you have in front of you a copy of a letter that's ready for me to sign from Ana Maria Roca, from Mercado on Fifth. And this is related to the same thing we just voted on resolution, we voted on with the chamber. However, the way she presented it to me was, it's an individual letter from the mayor. So, I just wanted you to know that, I mean, I, I believe we all support Mercado in so many ways, and this is another way to show it. So, I'll be signing that and sending that off, so that they can get their applications in on time. Secondly, we have on Sunday, Meet Your Army Event at Modern Woodman Park. I know about this because of my work with the Rock Island Arsenal Defense Alliance. And that's pre-game festivities, 12:30, game time, 1:00 P.M. I just wanted you to know about that, in case your constituents are interested. Certainly, we want to support the arsenal in as many ways we can. And lastly, there is Mississippi Rivers Cities and Towns Initiative. I don't know how many of you have talked about that previously. They do come for me, to me, with asking for support for different initiatives from time to time. Our friend, Bob Gallagher, the mayor of Bettendorf, is a co-chair of that organization. So, I've paid close attention, and that, that organization has asked us to pay, be a dues-paying member for $3,000. And I think what I'd like you to do is simply read up on them a little bit, MRCTI, that you can find them online, or I have some materials here. I would think that would be something we'd want to consider, potentially, in the upcoming budgets, $3,000. They are very focused on the health of the river, I would say I've learned from a bit more of a development standpoint, economic development standpoint. Another organization that I've been introduced to recently is MRRRI, which is the Mississippi River Restoration and Resilience Initiative. This has more of an environmental bent, and doesn't ask for any dues or any of that sort of thing, but I wanted you to know that, about these, if you didn't know about them, and that I have some interaction with them. MRCTI is having a reception this Thursday. I believe we're learning more about their plastic pollution initiative. And I did ask, I was allowed to take a guest, I did ask Alderman Moyer to, to join me, because we've had previous conversations about microplastics in the river, et cetera, and I thought that was appropriate to his interests, and he said yes. So, we hope to learn more about that. And that is all I have. Staff, do you have anything?
I have a list a mile long, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to share that this evening. But I, but I will, a couple things. One, I want to thank Marty, because I know there's very few meetings left, and, and I want to give him kudos. I know there's very few meetings left. And, and I want to give him kudos for all the work he's done holding this place together, based on what I've seen. It is not a one-man show. And, and, and his absence is going to be felt. I can assure you of that. You know, the rest of the staff will feel the pressure in his absence, as will Margaret, and I'm sure myself included especially. But, but I wanted to thank him for, for all his, his time with the city. I did want to, to bring up just one thing, and that relates to the TaxSlayer Center. You know, before I arrived here, and going back to the previous mayor, previous council, you know, they came out in March of 20, in March of '21, then again in May of '21, then in June of '21, and now in July of '21, you know, basically moving, moving their requests forwards slowly without response. And at the last board meeting, as you know, I sit on that board now, at the last board meeting, it did come up again, you know, where are we at, and where are the requests going to end up? They are not looking for payment today. I think what they're looking for, from my understanding, is more of an earmark, some kind of a sincere earmark that would tell them that when the council is deliberating, and they make a decision, that's similar to what we've done with the, with the Small Business Micro Loan Program, which is much smaller than the demand, by the way, as you'll learn in short, short order. But looking for an earmark, so that they can go ahead and front the money to the sports teams, and then be reimbursed later. The steamrollers are the ones that are going to have the most difficult time getting up and running again. There's no question that they are a part of the economic engine of, of the city. And I would say probably a pretty significant part, based upon some of the reports that I have not seen before, which I still have yet to read, but I glanced through as they came through today, going back to May, when the original request came in. So, like a small business, or small sports teams, your arena is an anchor. We fought to get it in Moline. They've never needed money in the past, and I think that, I think their request is going to focus, aside from the sports teams, their focus is going to be on what is a four-way agreement. State-funded grant, city matching portion to that grant, and then MetroLink's contribution toward the improvement that they want to do between the Radisson and, and the TaxSlayer Center. That's really what they're looking for, is that match there, which was about $700,000. It's a $750,000 grant. And there's about $100,000 to $150,000 that MetroLink is also putting in, not, you know, as a part of that, the Great Lawn Improvement, because it was called the Great Lawn, apparently. So the Great Lawn Improvement Project, you know, and then MetroLink is also then, with their funds and resources, grants, taking care of improving the docks, the boat docks that serve not only the TaxSlayer, but the Radisson, and any other boaters for that matter. And I will tell you, if you don't live there, and you're not down on the water, it's very active. I mean, to watch the rowers out there every morning, crack of dawn, you have an active waterfront. So, you know, I think there's a lot to be said about the waterfront development. I think the project that they're suggesting can be vetted here through the city very easily. It's not news to anybody sitting in this room. It predates me. But I think they're going to be looking for some kind of an answer, and, and, and sooner than later. On Friday, the, the gentleman who owns the, the football team is going to be in my office to visit. He wanted to meet with the mayor, but she's committed, has other commitments outside the office that day. You know, and I want to be able to give them some guidance. I mean, it's, it's kind of awkward to sit there without some level of direction from the council, because I can't, I certainly can't commit it. So.
So do you have direction for him? Mr. Waldron?
If I remember correctly, it was a four-pronged thing. The TaxSlayer wanted money, Steamwaders wanted money, Hockey wanted money, and then they wanted $700,000 for the Big Lawn Project. I feel the biggest need is to the TaxSlayer. I, I can get behind that, for sure.
The $700,000?
Big Lawn one?
No.
No. I can, they asked for money for, like, any small business that suffered under COVID. I can't remember what it was. I think it was like, I saw $160,000 or something like that.
The Center, TaxSlayer Center was about $100,000. When they last came in, it was 217 to the Steamroller, Steamwaders, and then the storm was $165,000. And then this other thing really is a, it's a capital improvement program that goes beyond, that goes beyond the pandemic, actually.
I can get behind the TaxSlayer one, for sure. If they're looking for, personally, I can, especially if it's not going to come out of ARP money. If it's going to come out of tourism, or if we have contingency for that amount of money, I would move it to there, rather than ARP money. The Steamwaders and the Hockey, I understand that. I probably can get on board for that one. I have more heartburn with the Big Lawn Project, the $700,000 one. I don't know where we're coming up with the $700,000 other than ARP. And I'd like to know if that even qualifies under ARP, but that could be coming a week or two.
That's why we invited the experts to come in and edumicate everybody, because I was hearing a lot of complaints.
And I may sound like a broken wheel, but I have not had a lot of input from my constituents about the Big Lawn Project. I've had more, you'll be really shocked to hear this, about infrastructure and streets and broadband.
Fix it.
Yep.
Fix it, and put that in. So while I think the Big Lawn Project is maybe a very credible project, I'm not sure I'm on board with that. That's my input.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Beg your pardon, there's just enough discussion going on. Actually, since they were last here, I've now engaged in a business relationship with the TaxSlayer Center, as well as the QC Storm. So I need to recuse myself from this conversation.
Okay. Mr. Timian?
I, I will just second Alderman Waldron. With slight differences, I am, just, if you're taking tallies, I'm, I would endorse the first three, without hesitation, as economic drivers to downtown and the community. I see extreme value, ARP, whatever, I'm cool. Big Lawn, I think, is a much bigger conversation, that, you know, he doesn't even want our approval until there's state sponsorship, the first half. So I think that that's-
It's a long way to go.
That's a long way. I'm not even going to entertain that at the moment.
Mr. O'Brien, and then Mr. Waldron.
I would just, what, I think the path we're going down here is the two sports teams.
Yep.
They're going to need some help.
Yep.
And the, the arena definitely needs some help.
Yeah.
And we understand that all these arenas have lifespans, and we want to keep ours as vibrant as we can as long, because it is a cornerstone for downtown. So, that's all I've got to say.
I generally agree with everybody else, but I just was going to say that was well said, and I'm right there with him.
Okay. Oh, do you have to refuse as well, or no?
No, no, I love the idea of having that, but yeah, it basically, I agree with you. Where's the money going to come from?
Earmark it.
Okay. Thumbs up from Mr. Williams. Mr. Van Nuys had one little thing to add.
At a low point in the meeting, I was looking at the internet.
What?
There's a, a article in QuadCities.com. It says Quad Cities Cultural Venues Win $5.4 Million in New Federal COVID Relief, Under the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant Program of the Small Business Administration. So this article is dated today. So, so I'm just, I just want, all this discussion, all the Figueroa Museums, City Valley Fairgrounds, TaxSlayer Center of Moline Receives $2.3 Million. So, I don't know if that's a cumulative amount. You know, I know they got about $400,000 when I was on the board there.
Oh, is it the original?
So this is, I'm not trying to, like, own up anybody. I just-
No.
I just should be very-
He for me, certainly.
I had a very six conversation.
Okay. We'll leave that to you, but you have-
Let me all ask Scott about it, because he did not mention it at all. And we had eight communications back and forth this afternoon by email.
Okay. So we have no public comment left, moving us on? Then we have executive session, I believe, yes? Do we have executive session?
Yes, Your Honor. Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion, of review of executive session minutes, 5ILCS120/2C21, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5ILCS120/2C1.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Timian. Roll call, please. Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And the motion passes.
I would also like to include litigation on my motion.
You have to read the citation.
I think that you have to do one.
I'm sorry.
Also pending probable or imminent litigation, 5ILCS120/2C11, to my last motion.
Second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Alderman, Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.